The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Ingracia. Alderman Koltar. Alderman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Volmer. Alderman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaquaro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Con. Alderman Clark Hubbard. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Navarro. President Reed.
Here.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Ingracia. Alderman Volmer. Alderman Martin. Ald- Alderman Ornowitz. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Con. Fifteen present.
Coram being present, we will be led today in prayer by Pastor Cornelius Moore from Park Fountain Park Church of God in Christ in the Eighteenth Ward. But before I turn it over to the pastor, I had a, you know, a conversation with Alderman Arnowitz this morning about his daughter, and I told him that we would keep her in our prayers, and he wanted me to tell you all thanks in advance for that. So let's keep her, keep her in our prayers and the family for a complete recovery.
So shall my word be that God forth out of my mouth, it shall not return unto me void, but it shall accomplish that which I please, and it shall prosper into the things where to I send it. Isaiah chapter fifty-five, verse eleven. Let's pray. Father God, in the name of Jesus. Lord Jesus, we come before you this morning, thanking you for this opportunity. We thank you for waking us up this morning. We thank you for life, Lord. Lord Jesus, we ask that you come in and bless this great house, Lord. Bless these civic leaders, Lord. And Lord, bind them together as one, as one mind. Lead them and guide them through wisdom and truth, Lord. Let us be one, Lord. And Lord Jesus, we pray for the, uh, the citizen of this great city of St. Louis. And Lord Jesus, we thank you for everything that you have done for us, Lord. And Lord, we pray for the students of Sumner, uh, the young leaders. And Lord, we pray for the violence, Lord. Stay the hand of death. I bind everything that's coming against this city. Anything that is not like Jesus, we bind it right now in the name of Jesus. And we cast it out right now in the name of Jesus. Lord Jesus, lead us and guide us, Lord. You said, "A house divided against itself cannot stand." Lord, we asking for you, your love and your leadership right now, Lord. Lead and guide these Aldermans right now, Lord, to make the right decision. And let love permeate this place, Lord. Let your love come in, Lord. Bind us as one, Lord. Oh, Lord, we thank you. We magnify you. Lord, help us. Help us right now, Lord. Lord, we need you. Only you can change man mind. We ask that you bless us right now. And Lord, we ask that you look upon Tracy right now. Let your love shine upon her. Heal, touch and deliver right now. As I pray right now, Lord, I'm asking that you go into the hospital room right now and bless her and heal her right now in the name of Jesus. Lord, you can do anything but fail. Lord, I'm asking that you do it right now in the name of Jesus. And Lord Jesus, we magnify you, we glorify you, we give you all the honor and glory, and we call it done in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pastor Moore, I know that Alderman Arnowitz and Tracy and the family, thank you so much for those, uh, that blessing. Let's give him a big round of applause and thank you. Dispense with our regular order of business, take up our courtesy resolutions calendar. Alderman from the twenty-third, you're recognized on the motion for our courtesy resolutions calendar.
Yes, I'd like to make the motion that you approve our resolutions.
Moved by Alderman from the twenty-third, seconded by Alderman from the thirteenth and the twenty-seventh. Alderman from the fourth.
Would just two students from Sumner, and Mr. Ray, please come up. Excuse me. Mr. Ray? Would you please come up and explain what it is that we're doing today?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Alderman. Uh, these students at Sumner High School. These students is from Sumner High School after the jamboree earlier this year that you know that there was a young lady that was killed by gun violence after that, uh, that morning and the, and that after the weekend in the class with these students, we did an activity where we were gonna brainstorm about how we can decrease violence in our neighborhoods. And the students, through the course of that discussion, they came up with that they wanted to have a peace march. And they immediately said they wanted to go and see Dr. Nichols, our principal, to see if he would support their idea. Uh, Dr. Nichols immediately supported them, and then they went about organizing first their freshman class, and then when we had one of our seniors step forward, uh, and he wanted to help mentor them on what they were gonna do. And it then just went on until the whole school was organized, and they went about making signs and planning, uh, this effort. And on September the thirteenth, we held the peace march in the Tuskegee Ironman Field across from the school. Each time, uh, the students marched around the field, we stopped, we bowed our heads, and we called all the names of the young people who had died by gun violence in our community. Uh, it was a very moving activity, and it was almost ninety degrees out there, but the students persevered through it all, and I'm very proud of them, and I'm humbled to be here today.
Sumner High School is the oldest high school west of the Mississippi, and they've been trying to close it for a long time, but I'm very proud of these young men that stuck and stayed and wouldn't go away, and that their parents were bold enough to send them to Sumner. And we're looking for more attendance, and I'm asking all my colleagues out there to send somebody down to Sumner High School to join us in our endeavors to bring it back to Sumner the grander that it once was. Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution?
Resolution one sixty-seven. Whereas on August twenty-third, twenty nineteen, following a high school football jamboree, Jarnie Thompson, an eight-year-old student from Herzak Elementary, was shot and killed. And whereas the shooting profoundly affected Mr. Cummings and his students, and they were given an end-class brainstorming assignment. How can we stop the violence in our neighborhoods? During the course of the discussion which followed, Regina Washington suggested having a march to protest violence, and whereas several students asked for permission to go to the principal to talk about their idea. Regina Washington, Stefan Riggins, DeMarsha Corns, Robin Steed, and Natal Knox went to see the principal, Dr. Nichols, and whereas Dr. Nichols was supportive of their idea and rec- and request they come up with the plan. The students then met with Ty Keith Patton, a freshman student leader organizer, who joined the group. Nick Ford, a senior, heard about the idea and offered to mentor them. And whereas the freshman group, along with Nick, their mentor, then met with Mr. Northway, Mr. Breezly, and Mr. Burton, and asked for advice and guidance on marches and sign-making. And whereas the students came up with a plan to march around the football field, then call out the name of each young person killed by gun violence since April twenty nineteen. The final call was, the final plan was to call each name, then ring a bell and go around the field again. Stop-call each name, then ring the bell again several more times. And whereas the group organized, the rest of the freshman class, who in turn organized the other grades, on September the eleventh, twenty nineteen, continuing the tradition of Sumner High School, a peace march was held to help end violence in our community. Now therefore, let it be resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberations to recognize Mr. Ray Cummings, his students, and all the participants who took part and made the peace march against violence a success. We further direct the clerk of this board to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings and to prepare a commemorative copy to the end that it may be presented at a time and place deemed appropriate by the sponsor. Introduced this, introduced this first day of November twenty nineteen by the Honorable Samuel Moore, Alderman Fourth Ward, Honorable Louis E. Reed, President of the City of St. Louis Board of Aldermen, adopted this first day of November twenty nineteen.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Dr. Nichols is not here. He's the principal of Sumner High School. Dr. Nichols is here? You notice him by his smile. Doc, come have a few words.
He looks like one of the students, that's why.
I didn't turn around, I didn't see him here. Have some words. Go ahead.
Well, I am really, uh, thank you, uh, thank you to the, to President Reed and all the Aldermen, and we really appreciate you all giving us this opportunity to allow our students to be a part of helping to heal St. Louis. So I, I'm really honored to be the leader of these young people and their teachers, and they do all of the work, and, and, and anything that they do, I'm very supportive of it, and I'm just so honored that this class of twenty twenty and twenty twenty-four, they're just so intelligent. So give a round of applause. I really appreciate them for all the work that they, they do. So, so the work that they put in around helping to make the school a better place for all students, and I'm just so honored just to be a part of this. So Mr. Northway, the teacher, who really inspired our students to be a part of this, Mr. Northway, I really would like Mr. Northway to come explain in his, uh, uh, his perspective what students.
You can't talk that long.
Oh. Oh, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Um, all I really like to say is, cause they've said so much, but what I'd like to say is that this movement that these students have started has not stopped. On, uh, November thirteenth, we're starting a peace garden, flower garden, out in front of school. And the really neat thing about this is, is that we have, uh, we have a slogan that we used in the march was, "Put down the Glock, clean up the block." So what, what we've found is, we found a gun that's been beaten down into a garden tool, and we're gonna use this garden tool to start and break ground for our flower garden, which we call our peace garden, that's gonna be out in front of our school. So anyone that would like to join us on November thirteenth, it's gonna start at two fifteen? Shameless plug, I know. But, but I appreciate it very much for bringing us up here. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to hear from one of the students, the leader, who, who leads this group, who is in charge of the youth. One of the leaders, anybody wanna speak? You got one second.
Good morning, everybody.
How long-winded are you?
No, I'm good. Good morning, everyone. Uh, I just wanna say, I'm proud of what happened in the peace march and what, how, where we are now. Uh, my fellow classmates and I, we created this, uh, for a reason. We saw that a, a lot of violence was happening, you know what I'm saying? But violence happens all the time, you know what I'm saying? And I will do whatever I can to stop that. My father said, "If I say to a wicked man, you will surely die, and you not, do not try to dissuade that wicked man from his evil ways, that wicked man will surely die, and I will hold you accountable for." So, me, I wanna do whatever I can to, you know what I'm saying, stop the violence or, uh, persuade my, my brother or my sister to, uh, do right or live righteous.
Louis, would you make the presentation for me?
Alderman from the twenty-sixth.
Morning, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to make the motion to move this resolution in bank.
Moved by Alderman from twenty-sixth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fourth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. Uh, Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted.
Alderman from the first ward.
Sam gave me two seconds to say congratulations to you. Sumner's a wonderful high school. What you're doing is great. I have a, I didn't attend Sumner, but my father-in-law, Sam Miller, is one of your walls. If you look at the wall, he's up there. He was the football coach. He, he played football there. He was athletic director. Um, the first time I ever went to Annie Malone Parade was in front of Sumner. You have a beautiful history. And so even though I didn't, uh, attend Sumner, I root for Sumner most times. Cause I do have some people that go to Vashon in my ward.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Uh, also just wanna thank each and every one of you for what you've done. Uh, I don't know about all of you, but I just feel so inspired to see our young people so on top of it. I think about myself when I was in high school and I was not organizing peace marches, right? Uh, but this type of a movement and, uh, you all taking this type of initiative is huge, and, uh, you are changing lives, and I'm, I'm sure that you're gonna go on to do even greater things as adults. And I'm just honored to share the diocese with you today, and, uh, so honored to have had an opportunity to meet you, and, uh, look forward to working with you in the future on any of your endeavors. This resolution is the highest honor the board has to give any organization or individual. And what it does is cements in time some of your many contributions up until this point. So one hundred, two hundred years from now, when they read about how St. Louis worked to address the issues of violence within our community, they will read about your peace march, and they'll read about each and every one of you, and know that you passed this way and you made a significant contribution to addressing those issues. So let's just stand and give them a big round of applause, and I thank you for what they've done. And. Uh, Alderman Moore says, okay, if we invite all the members of the board to come up for the photo, he said, uh, he said, "Move quickly," because he wants to get things moving. So please join us at the diocese for a photo with the kids if you'd like to be a part of the photo. Yeah, say, oh, she says she can't move as fast as you.
She got that bulldog color on.
Alderman from the twenty-third. And Alderman from the fourteenth approached the diocese.
Cause there's no way I'll see that. Okay. Unless you gotta magnify glass with you. Okay. All right, um. Come on, Pat. We are honoring, uh, Pat Young today, one of the building, um, inspector supervisors who's been with the city, um, a long time, since nineteen seventy-eight. And she is today, yesterday was her last day of employment with the City of St. Louis. She has served my ward since my inauguration in twenty-ten and has always been responsive. Honoring Pat Young, whereas it has come to the attention of the Honorable Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis of the many years of dedicated service of Pat Young and her upcoming retirement. And whereas working for the public is always a daunting task, but Pat has shown dedication and commitment to this service that has lasted several decades. And whereas she began her career with the City of St. Louis in September of nineteen seventy-eight at the City Hospital in the Medical Supply Department. Whereas in nineteen eighty, she was promoted to supervisor of the Medical Supply Department and was a testament to her skill at the job. And whereas Pat left her employment with the city and returned in August of nineteen eighty-three to continue her public service, whereas when she returned, she took a position with the Health and Hospitals Department as supervisor of Central Supply Department. And whereas Pat transferred to the City of St. Louis Building Division in November of nineteen eighty-five to be a Building Inspector One. And whereas she was promoted to Inspector Two in April of nineteen eighty-seven, then Building Inspector Supervisor on July first, nineteen ninety-one. And whereas she has served as a Building Inspector in many parts of the city, showing professionalism, care wherever she was situated, ending her career with the City of St. Louis and South St. Louis, whereas Pat has been an asset to our community and will be missed. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberations upon occasion of her retirement to recognize, commend, thank, and congratulate Pat Young on her many years of dedicated service and employment with the City of St. Louis. We further direct the clerk of this board to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings and to prepare a commemorative copy to that end, that it may be presented at a time and place today by the sponsors, um, Alderman, Carol, and myself. Pat, we appreciate your service. You've always been responsive, and, um, after this much time, you deserve it. Good luck in your future endeavors and spending time with your family. I think, uh, that it's time, and we will miss you, we really will.
Thank you.
Okay, and.
I do wanna say, Pat is what the building inspectors are all about. Her and all the inspectors that I've had the opportunity to work with have been great because they get to play the bad guy while I get to play the good guy. They go out and find stuff, or if I call and say, "I got a neighbor complaint," they go out, they help, they take care of it. Pat has been like family to me. When I went in for my eye surgery, she called and said, "Oh, I had that done, and I know exactly where to go." And she took me, and she waited in the waiting room while they operated on my eyes. They're still, they're getting better, but I can't see as good yet. But she's been, and, and of course, she's still gonna be in my ward and still a friend, but I did wanna thank her for all of her service to me and the twenty-third ward and to her leadership. So, and then, Frank, you wanna say something? Frank, you're next. You're last.
Well, I just wanted to say that I've been blessed with a lot of really good people in the Building Division over the years, and, um, when I got to the Building Division thirty-one years ago, Pat was already there. She was a supervisor, and, uh, she was one of the very few female supervisors we've had. A lot of things have changed up there in the last thirty years, and Pat has just been a tremendous asset to us all that time. She's loyal, she's, you know, true to the city and concerned about residents, and, you know, I just couldn't ask for a better employee, and I really wish her all the happiness in her retirement and look forward to seeing her at our Christmas party.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, congratulations, Pat. Anybody that stays with the city for forty-one years, I'm not gonna say if you're crazy or not. I'm gonna say how fortunate the city is, and I usually don't even ask for M-Bank, but anytime, you're a trailblazer as a woman. I appreciate that. Um, and many times women take things for granted. They don't know the people who made it possible for us to go forth with these kind of things. Being supervisor back in the day when you were, that was hard. I know a lot of people in those times didn't think women should have those positions and gave them a hard time. So I wanna thank you not only as a member of the Board of Aldermen, but as a female that you've made it possible for me to do things too. I appreciate it, and I would like, if, if there's no objection, I'd like to move that we pass this, uh, resolution in bank.
Moved by Alderman from the first, seconded by Alderman from the nineteenth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Uh, Pat, I just wanna just thank you all so for all the great work that you have done throughout the years. Um, people see some of these things, uh, happen and see the Building Division responding and stuff, and they don't know where it begins. You all have a great department. You've done just tremendous, uh, throughout each and every ward across the city for all the years, uh, that I've been, I've, I've watched you closely, so I just wanna thank you all for a job well done. Uh, I'm just so honored to be part of this day today, uh, and, uh, being able to share this diocese as we present you. And being able to share this dais as we present you with this resolution that codifies all that you've done throughout the years and places it in our permanent records. And you are well deserved. And as Alderman said, from the first ward, a trailblazer. Let's give Pat a big round of applause and congratulations.
Thank you very much. I've really enjoyed the forty-one years with the city. The Building Division was very welcoming when I came. And I've had great leadership. Many of these people were there when I started, so I've really enjoyed working for the city. But now I'm going to enjoy my grandchildren. And my son is here today, and him and his wife, they've got four kids. So I'm going to babysit and take care of the dogs, the cats and the kids. So, thank you again very much.
Let's give Pat one more big round of applause. Been moved and seconded that we adopt our courtesy resolutions, calendar, all in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. With that, we'll return to our regular order of business, introduction of honored guests, any introduction of honored guests. Alderman from the fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have my special guest, our committee woman, Gwendolyn Evans. Thank you.
Welcome. Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Any further introductions of honored guests? We also have with us Moms Demand Action, let's give them a round of applause and thank them for their attendance today at today's meeting. Alderman from the twenty-third. Alderman from the twenty-third. Alderman from the twenty-third, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I was busy talking. I would move for the approval of the minutes of the October twenty-fifth meeting.
Been moved by Alderman from the twenty-third, second by Alderman from the first, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B and C of the agenda and has been placed into Alderman's mailboxes.
We've dispensed with line items seven, would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? We've dispensed with line items eight through ten. First reading of board bills.
Board Bill one forty-one, sponsored by Alderman Boyd. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment making a supplemental appropriation to the annual budget ordinance seven zero nine six three for fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and nineteen and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, amounting to the sum of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one forty-two, sponsored by Alderman Negrasia. An ordinance approving a blighting study and redevelopment plan for the twenty-six thirty-three through thirty-five Allen Avenue redevelopment area after finding that the area is blighted as defined in section nine nine point three two zero of the revised statutes of Missouri, two thousand and sixteen, as amended, finding that there shall be available five-year tax abatement based on fifty percent of the assessed value of the incremental improvements and pledging cooperation of the Board of Aldermen. Board Bill one forty-three, sponsored by Alderman Todd. An ordinance amending the redevelopment plan for the Washington Vander Vander and Wright Pendleton redevelopment area approved by ordinance six nine five one nine dated July twenty-fourth, two thousand and thirteen by extending the implementation schedule now calling for projects to be completed May first, two thousand and twenty-nine. Board Bill one forty-four, sponsored by Alderman Todd. An ordinance approving the redevelopment plan for the thirty-seven sixty-five Lindle Boulevard area. Board Bill one forty-five, sponsored by Alderman Todd. An ordinance amending the redevelopment plan for the Vander Vander Finney Washington Taylor redevelopment area approved by ordinance six nine four one zero dated February twenty-first, two thousand and thirteen by extending the implementation schedule now calling for projects to be completed by May first, two thousand and twenty-nine. That is extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to committee.
To the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill one forty-one. To the Neighborhood Development Committee, Board Bill one forty-two and one forty-four. To the HUDs Committee, Board Bill one forty-three and one forty-five. That is extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
The following board bills were reported out of Streets Committee with the due past recommendation. Board Bill one zero eight, sponsored by Alderman Middlebrook. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to vacate public service rights for vehicle, equestrian and pedestrian travel in Forday Street from Antelope Street to Thatcher Avenue and the East Mint, a hundred and fifty feet of the twenty-foot wide east-west alley in City Block four two three three as bounded by Antelope, Forday, Thatcher, East Railroad in the City of Saint Louis, Missouri as herein after described in accordance with Charter Authority and conformity with section fourteen of Article twenty-one of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill one zero nine, sponsored by Alderman Martin. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above-surface, surface and subsurface rights for vehicle, equestrian and pedestrian travel in Van Buren Street from Prim Street to Tesson Street in the City of Saint Louis, Missouri as herein after described in accordance with Charter Authority and conformity with section fourteen of Article twenty-one of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill one ten, sponsored by Alderman Middlebrook. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above-surface, surface and subsurface rights for vehicle, equestrian and pedestrian travel in the Eastern Most as bound by Forday, Thatcher, East Railroad and Antelope in the City of Saint Louis, Missouri as herein after described in accordance with Charter Authority and in conformity with section fourteen of Article twenty-one of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill one seventeen, sponsored by Alderman Todd pursuant to ordinance six eight nine three seven. An ordinance authorizing the honorary street name Pastor Nelson Watts Senior and Rosetta Watts Lane, which shall begin at the intersection of East Cook Avenue and Jones Street and run north on Jones Street to the intersection of Jones Street and Page Boulevard. That is the extent of first reading, report of standing committees.
Dispense for line item fourteen. Perfection consent.
Board Bill eighteen, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey. An ordinance approving the petition to establish a newstead West Community Improvement District, establishing the newstead West Community Improvement District and finding a public purpose for the establishment of the newstead West Community Improvement District. Board Bill ninety-eight, sponsored by Alderman Davis. An ordinance approving the petition to establish the Olive West Community Improvement District, establishing the Olive West Community Improvement District, reaffirming certain findings of blighting and finding a public purpose for the establishment of the Olive West Community Improvement District. Board Bill one thirteen, sponsored by Alderman Davis. An ordinance approving the petition to establish the two thousand and nineteen Grand Center Community Improvement District, finding a public purpose therefore and containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill one twenty-nine, sponsored by Alderman Ornowitz, Alderman Tyus, Alderman Green, Alderman Navarro, Alderman Rice, Alderman Negrasia, Alderman Middlebrook, Alderman Clark Hubbard and Alderman Todd. An ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Department of Human Services on behalf of the City of Saint Louis to accept the grant award from the Family Community Trust in the amount of thirty-five thousand from the No Kid Hungry Missouri School Year Nineteen Summer Special Grant Program and to expand those funds as part of the City of Saint Louis, City of Saint Louis Child and Adult Care Food Program, After School Meal Program and Summer Food Services Program, starting in two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty school year as set forth in the grant agreement attached heretofore as exhibit eight, appropriating said funds and authorizing the Director of Human Services upon the approval of the Board of Estment and Apportionment to expand such funds as permitted by the grant award agreement and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one nineteen, sponsored by Alderman Davis. An ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Apportionment authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller of the City of Saint Louis to enter into and execute on behalf of the city's seven first amended on airport passenger vehicle rentals concession agreements at Saint Louis Lambert International Airport and containing an emergency clause. That is the extent of perfection consent calendar.
Alderman from the nineteenth.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to move to suspend the rules.
Oh, wait a minute. Yeah, wait till after we do this.
Okay.
Alderman from the twenty-third, you recognize on the motion to adopt a perfection consent calendar.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the consent calendar.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-third, entertain a second on that motion. Second by Alderman from the twenty-seventh, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Alderman from the nineteenth, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules to move Board Bill one thirteen to the third reading. Set calendar, please.
It's been moved by Alderman from the nineteenth that we suspend our rules for the purposes of moving Board Bill one thirteen to third reading consent. Entertain a second on that motion, second by Alderman from the twenty-seventh, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Negrasia. Alderman Koltar. Alderman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacoro. Alderman Narayan. Alderman Kong. Alderman Clark Hubbard. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Navarro. President Reed. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderman Howard. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Boyd. Twenty-three aye votes.
Right, vote, stay in the motion of Alderman from the nineteenth and place Board Bill one thirteen on third reading consent. Madam Clerk, please move, at the request of Alderman from the first, please move Board Bill one twenty-six from the third reading consent calendar to the regular third reading calendar. Third reading consent.
Board Bill one zero six, one twenty-eight, one zero four, one eleven, one twenty-seven and Board Bill one thirteen.
Alderman from the twenty-third, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the third reading consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from the twenty-third, second by Alderman from the twenty-seventh, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Negrasia. Alderman Koltar. Alderman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacoro. Alderman Narayan. Alderman Kong. Alderman Clark Hubbard. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Navarro. President Reed. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Koltar. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Boyd. Twenty-three aye votes.
By vote, staying the motion of the Alderman from the twenty-third and third read and finally passed the aforementioned bills, third reading, report of engrossance.
Board Bill one twenty-six, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey. An ordinance to submit a two thousand and twenty annual action plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development as required to apply for funding under the Community Development Grant Block Grant, Home Investment Partnership Emergency Solutions Grant and Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS Entitlement Programs. Authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller on behalf of the City of Saint Louis to enter into and execute agreements with HUD for the receipts of two thousand and twenty CDBG home ESG and HOPOR funds.
Alderman from the seventeenth, you recognize on third reading, final passage of Board Bill one twenty-six.
Yes, Mr. President, I move for third reading, final passage.
Move by Alderman from the seventeenth, entertain a second on that motion. Second by Alderman from the fourteenth, any discussion? Alderman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, I ask that the Board Bill one twenty-six be brought down to the regular consent calendar because I wanted to address an issue. A few weeks ago, we passed a board bill that became an ordinance for nonviolence. I do have some concerns, I made those known. But I got some pushback from people in the community, said, well, why would you do that? We already have this organization out there. They're doing this, they're doing that. And I say, yeah, that organization's been out for a long time putting up signs and they get block grant money. And so I got a big argument that they do not get block grant money. So I'm trying really hard not to say names because I'm a name person. But that organization that you all were arguing with me about has several hundred thousand dollars of block grant money in this plan. And so I think we ought to bring that organization in because I cannot remember ever them coming in and showing us what they were accomplishing with this money that we give them. And we keep putting them in the block grant money. But it makes no sense to me that we somehow don't make them account. If we're going to make Cure for Violence, if they have to have an accountability, so does this organization too. So I am going to be talking with them, these are people that are my friends. But this is about money that the city needs. And so I would like them to, I'm going to talk to them and see if they would just come in and tell us what they're doing. If not, I'm hoping that people will sponsor a resolution with me, that they come in and tell us what they're doing with this money because they've been on the block grant train for a long time. And it's not right, if we're going to say Cure for Violence has to have steps and prove what they're doing, then we ought to make sure that other people also go through that same process. So I'm going to be voting present, not because I'm against this, but just because I don't believe that people should stay within the block grant funding for years and years and years and there's no accountability for it.
Thank you.
And I request a roll call.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the seventeenth, you recognize the close.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, we, I believe the HUDs Committee is always open for, and supportive of transparency and we would welcome virtually anyone's request for us to entertain or host or perhaps, in that case, it might be more appropriate for them to appear before one of our other committees. But surely, if there's a desire for them to appear before HUDs, we will gladly welcome and take that responsibility seriously. With that, I renew my motion that we third read and finally pass this block grant bill. It is time sensitive in the sense that if we do not get it out of here It is time-sensitive in the sense that if we do not get it out of here and returned, I'm not sure what the penalty is, but they're expecting us, and I would hate to be the one who's responsible for us losing millions of dollars of federal money. So, thank you.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 17th, second about Alderman from the 14th that we third read and final pass Board Bill 126. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacoro. Alderman Naraya. Alderman Con. Alderman Clark Hubbard. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Navarro. President Reed. Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Davis. Alderman Boyd. 17 aye votes and 6 present.
By vote, you stay in the motion of Alderman from the 17th and third read and final pass Board Bill 126. Report of enrollment.
Board Bill 106, 128, 104, 111, 127, 113, and 126.
All other business being suspended, presence shall in open session affixes signature heretofu to the end that these may become law. First reading resolutions.
Resolution 169, sponsored by Alderman Davis.
Uh, 66.
Oh, I'm sorry. Resolution 66, sponsored by Alderman Davis.
166.
166. Resolution 166, sponsored by Alderman Davis. The Cities, the City Ord, uh, and Assessors, Assessors 2020-2021 Assessment Maintenance Plan.
Alderman from the 19th, you recognize on the first reading, Resolution 166.
Oh, okay. Uh, Resolution number 166 is, it's an annual requirement for this board through the Assessors Office, and we do this annually. It has the real and personal property information, and it has to have us be forwarded to the state. And the resolution just simply provides that and says that the Board of Alderman has been informed. So I'd like to move that we...
Want to request unanimous consent?
Yes, please. I'd like to request unanimous consent for Resolution number 166.
Hearing no objection. Would you like to make a motion to adopt Resolution?
I'd like to make a motion, a motion to adopt Resolution number 166.
Been moved by Alderman from the 19th, second about Alderman from the 27th that we adopt Resolution 166. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, is that the extent?
That is the extent of first reading of resolution.
Second reading.
We have none.
Miscellaneous unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Monday, November 4th, legislation, we have a meeting at 6:00 PM in the Kennedy Room. Tuesday, November 5th, Rules will have a meeting 10:00 AM in the Leisure Room. Wednesday, November 6th, HUDs will have a meeting 9:00 AM in the Kennedy Room. And Friday, November 8th, full board meeting is 10:00 AM in the chambers.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 24th.
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. President, and I'm going to work. Uh, I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware... Is my mic, oh, there we go.
Let's start over.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware. I had the opportunity to, uh, to take a look at the Carpenter's Union Wellness Center that's opened in the 24th, and it's a pretty incredible one-stop shop for, uh, for union carpenters. Uh, it has doctors, nurse practitioners, dentists, chiropractors, massage therapists. It's got a lab in there. And so, if any of your constituents happen to be union carpenters and you hear them saying that they need health care, this is an incredible resource. They don't charge co-pays. You go in there and you can schedule all the, all your, your health care needs, and it's kind of a one-stop shop. You go in there, you get everything done, and then you, you go home. It's saved both the union a ton of money and it's saving their members a ton of money, and it's a, it's a pretty neat resource. And just so that everyone's aware that it's out there, if anyone has constituents that have medical needs and they happen to be a union carpenter, please make sure that they're aware of this, uh, this resource.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 4th.
Mr. President, where is it located?
Uh, Alderman from the 24th, where is it located?
It is off Hampton, uh, just behind the Carpenter's Hall. Yes, uh, it's for anyone who's paid into the benefits program and has a, a, a union card as well as their family's.
Alderman from the 1st.
Um, Mr. President, members of the board, I heard the Alderman from the 24th has been there for the massage many, many times. No. Um, I just wanted to announce, last night, yesterday I had the chance to attend a Halloween party given by the Circuit Clerk and the sheriff. It was a wonderful thing. It was a lot of young people over there, several hundreds. This was the first time they tried this. Um, I suggested that maybe next year we partner with them and some other people in City Hall and maybe bring it to City Hall because it was wonderful to see all the young people with a safe place to trick or treat. And, um, they did this in less than a month, and I just wanted to give them a thank you for doing that, and I had a wonderful time with the people there. They had the band there, C Sharp was there, was a lot of people there. And I, I hope that, um, next year we may take a minute and look at trying to partner with them. I suggested that they partner with other people, um, that's in City Hall because that's a wonderful idea to maybe invite children from all over the city to have a safe place to do trick or treating. Thank you again.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements? Alderman from the 26th.
Thank you again, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, I have show and tell today like my colleague on my left, the mayor of North St. Louis often does. So if you have time, you can stop by my desk to see. This is a smoke detector from the control burn that I experienced, uh, earlier this week. This is less than three minutes worth of time in a fire, and you see how bad this is. So just imagine an uncontrolled fire. So as we celebrate this extra hour of sleep we're going to get this weekend, we want to also make sure that we check our smoke detectors, their batteries, make sure they're working, our CO detectors, give your families a plan from your children to your elders in your family a plan. You know that our city has just suffered a tremendous loss due to fires, so anything we can do proactively, I think we should. The Fire Department will come and install these for free. All you have to do is reach out to them. So shout out to the St. Louis Fire Department and all the work they do in the community. You all enjoy that extra hour of sleep, but check your smoke detectors and your CO detectors as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Uh, also directly following the board meeting, we have Moms Demand Action who are here with us today, uh, and we're going to have a ceremonial signing of Board Bill 106 in the Leisure Room. It turns out we're the first city in the nation, uh, to successfully pass that board bill to require, uh, licensed gun dealers to report, uh, the data back to the local law enforcement of people who apply and fail the background check. So we're the first city in the nation to pass that. We've gotten that done today. So let's just give a round of applause for all of you for getting that done. And thanks to Moms Demand Action for working, uh, hand-in-hand with the city and cities across America to work to get these common sense gun laws in place. Uh, but that's directly following the board meeting today. Alderman from the 23rd, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to excuse the alderperson from the 3rd, the 10th, the 11th, the 12th, the 16th, and the 22nd for necessary absence.
Been moved by Alderman from the 23rd, second about Alderman from the 19th, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. A little late. Alderman from the 23rd, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn until Friday, November 8th.
Moved by Alderman from the 23rd, second about Alderman from the 25th. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, stand adjourned.